Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Crestwood School District Study Session. I'll call a session to order at five oh five PM. Mr. Secretary, can we get a roll call?
Trustee Fawaz?
Here.
Trustee Sabah?
Here.
Trustee Williamson?
Here.
Just aim is here. Trustee Barry?
Here.
Uh, trustee Baydoun is not here.
Yep, he should be arriving shortly.
And Madam President.
Here, thank you. Okay, first um topic of discussion is the board policy review. Uh, Dr. Mo Salem, are we gonna work?
We're gonna work. Thank you, Madam President. So, for the board policy review, we're gonna follow the same exact format we've been following thus far. For this, this round, we are reviewing bylaws four thousand, support staff template, and bylaws five thousand student template. Um, as I mentioned to the board, the support staff template for by, for four thousand, um, and Dr. Lazar can clarify, because she's been working on it as well, is basically a lot of repetition from the um...
Threes, I believe.
From the threes, because it's, the threes was uh administration? I'm forgetting, but anyhow.
Professional staff?
Professional staff template. So, you have a different template for each group, and it's the same policy, so whatever changes you requested on the previous ones, we made those policies in advance for you. You'll see those changes. Um, and that's just, you know, to make it consistent. And then, when you get into the student template, there's a lot of things you'll see in the student template that we've already actually started progressing on, like we have our student handbook and different things as such. So, we'll follow the same format. If you, if I may ask the board, if you can get back into your groups, and I will pass out the folders. Andrew O'Hara is not here today. So, I will um...
So, you're stuck with me. I'm in that one.
Linda will support both groups as needed?
Are you sitting with us too?
Well, you've only been here once.
I was here twice.
Was it twice?
What color are you guys in?
Ooh, red.
I think we're a little bit wearing blue.
Well, this week you're green.
Sounds good.
You guys are black, I believe? So, if you open it up, again, same process. One person should be the recorder, so they'll only do one official uh... There'll only be one official packet that will um...
Are these new, so there's no writing from last time?
No, these are brand new. These are all brand new. So, the recorder will be the one that records whatever requests, questions, or changes in one packet. And then, timekeeper, and as well as um...
Is this on?
This is a thicker packet, but they're the same, right?
It's the same thing, but that's all right. So, recorder, timekeeper, and taskmaster. All right?
No, one's five thousand.
We'll begin. Fifteen minutes, read section.
Around forty-one ten, right?
She says I wanna take them back on like three minutes.
Where's forty-one? Yeah, we're missing forty-one.
Forty-one ten?
That's all part of the study.
No, it's broken up into threes.
Yep. Forty-one ten is the first.
Yeah, packet starts forty-three ten. So, remember, forty-one ten is... And taking each packet. You just received the entire thing. So, if you jump to forty-three ten, that's where you guys start.
Okidoki.
Oh.
This is blue, it's not black.
What's that?
It's not black, it's blue. Is mine black?
Is yours black? Well, I'm gonna be blacky.
No, you guys are blue.
Okay. Do they need a black? I have a black.
Uh, Danny has a black one.
You do?
I have that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Danielle, do you have any questions?
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't have any question.
It's basically, I mean, it's law, so there's a...
No, there's a check on the district offer confidence services, but that's okay. I don't think it was for harassment.
This applies to teachers too?
Was it for harassment?
Yeah, might have been for abortion.
Are we moving that way?
Person thought that had been subjected to lawful harassment.
Abortion?
But it's only, it's only the hourly salary?
What that is, is that's like a...
No, I understand. I'm just saying that could be what you're thinking.
So, if you were, if, if Moe is the one that was the recipient, and we found that whomever did it was culpable, then as a good gesture as a district, we would get Moe's support.
It was a different one. Not for harassment. It was a different one.
Anything?
So, we're good all the way here. We don't need to have all these people check this off. Student service is special as is fine. The complaint correspondence is dissatisfied, yep. So, we don't do verbal orders in five days, yep, we agreed on that. Parties are represented at their own cost, and we've got meetings here, yep.
So, silly question, but is the summer considered still present?
You can have it in, doesn't, if we don't have a meeting, you're not gonna hear it.
No, 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 yeah.
The district doesn't have um fifty-two weeks a year.
As far as silly questions?
No, silly questions.
So, they always have their character of expression, right?
What are you looking at? The board shall meet with certain parties.
So, when does it come to the board?
The board reserves the right to investigate and resolve complaint. Right below.
So, all of these technically, when we do a written regimen, normally there's a board?
No, the parties as the person filing the appeal. If they wanna bring an attorney, they gotta pay for it themselves. Uh, okay, is that a half? This is okay with me, you guys get how to go through it, I know. Writing behavior towards staff members. Uh, behavior that districts should bear with respect to the activity.
Termination.
Let me ask you a question about procedure on workplace safety number four. I'm good with it, but I'm just thinking ahead, like, incidents that are stressful or traumatic that interferes with the individual or group's ability to effectively function in his or her educational work.
Give you an example. Directly. Aggressive.
You look at it all the way, you make me feel uncomfortable.
Well, now you wear a long shirt. It's lunchtime. I know.
When we do the investigation, and we find out what really occurred, then at least it's a complaint. Either the person was inappropriate, or the person was not, the other person is a complaint.
I think that's the board, I think this should stay with the board.
Well, I know, a lot of this stuff is, you gotta protect yourself. Yeah, can't be taking an exchange with the wrong people, you know?
Man, you couldn't love that for... The resignations right now.
Right.
Where does it say that? A union contract?
Let's say you say...
I don't like what you're looking at, I'm sorry, by the way you're looking at it.
No, I'm just, I'm talking about a support staff member may resign by filing, uh, filing filing. A written resignation is written only thirty days prior to the effective date of the resignation. Is it thirty days, or is it two days?
Technically, even in the grammar class, we try to do thirty days. You can't cancel it if they can be here sooner than that. But if we save this out, then just...
Oh, so it's just accepted, yeah, okay. Just, okay, just accepted. Right, a resignation is accepted by the board, yeah, I know. And I, and I know why that was proposed. No, I know. The Board of Education superintendents deserve the right to require anything.
So then, so under FMLA laws, that qualifies for FMLA. No matter what, it's in here or not.
Not paid.
Unpaid, exactly. Unless they have sick days, and then if they exhaust their sick days, and it's only for a certain amount of time. So, no matter what, under that FMLA law, we have to...
Okay, so that's all federal. So, we really have nothing to say about this. I would love to see one where they do drug testing. Anything, Billy? A person's been sick on business.
So, we're appointing you the privacy officials in the group health plan.
So...
Look at you.
So, when we talk about the board may basically support staff member, why is it just support staff?
Because the other staff, as they're all staff.
And we talked about long-term care, and you said because of the plan, we asked you all those.
They have similar policy with a different number.
And they're not all for...
So, if we were to pull like thirty-one sick...
This is all being rehearsed.
Yeah, he's um had to do something at work. And he's daily. Five forty-five, and then he's working his way in.
Somebody wants us to keep reading.
Especially in New York. I was um on a call today with uh SECs.
Wow, we did a lot of whiteout here.
Did we talk about anything about drugs, or um the use of drugs anywhere in here?
Yeah.
I'm on, I'm still reading on uh unrequested list.
You get to the next one, controlled substance.
Oh, good, okay, good.
That's how long you're reading right now.
No, 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 members of General Counsel.
I'm probably gonna send an email just for an update on those three, on those grants. The per pupil, like the ninety-seven C, the ninety-seven E, the thirty-one AA. Just like, what are we doing with that, what are we... Probably be good to let everybody know.
Put your initials next to it.
It's a continuation of what we've done.
And put up there, put a little note next to it, not self-funded, so they know, per penny. Must be removed.
Did we do our side assessment, so they've taken place or not?
Must be removed.
Is it just for transporting?
Let me ask you, so the definition that they say member by law, or adopted foster child, stepchild, or ward or child is only employees standing. Why is that removed? Supports.
Okay, so if, if we have employees that travel from one building to another, fixed things. Uh, are they... It would be covered under here.
Under leave of absence, the children's health insurance wouldn't be cut out?
So... Who is doing this for the bus drivers?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the definition. I just wanna make sure their health insurance, even if I take a leave of absence, my health insurance.
Okay, and then, who does it for hours?
They still get it.
Like, people who are not under the...
And their children, and without the... Until they're at another. They pay for it. They pay for it. They have to pay for it. They do.
They pay for it through Cobra, not the district.
Not through Cobra, they pay a premium, right?
So, what, how would we word it, like, could we, once they're hired, or they're, or given a position, especially in a position like that?
They couldn't pay the portion that we would pay instead?
I think the policy, I can only do it regularly, but I think the policy is open to where if we wanted to.
No, 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 I'm not saying cover their Cobra, I'm saying allow them to pay what we're paying.
Right, so if we, let's say we have an employee that's...
Oh, is it?
You know, somebody's okay.
All right, I'm just trying to look out for mine, I ain't taking it.
In the end, and we spent probably an hour discussing it, and I'm a bit over the top on that subject. I'm worried right now. But basically, Penny, Linda, and Andrew, all three of them, they're just trying to fix the whole U.S. healthcare system.
So, alcohol and controlled substance, that's a different issue. Other staff can drive students or inspect service and condition. Where's the one, 'cause I see you're saying this is for bus drivers, where's for the other employees?
Oh, that's good.
They sent it to me.
Yeah. And you know, it's one of those things where you think about the things you're involved in, and I'm guilty of it too. Only because I'm doing it, like, I just, I'm wondering, like, what are we doing?
Now you're involved.
Yeah, you know?
How do we make sure? So, we have to do something that it doesn't come back to bite us?
If you'd like to ask them, you mean, to get a...
Right.
A drug test? We always normally call the internal six.
Okay, but so, should we, should we have it in the policy though? Like, let's say we hired new individual that came to our district, or we have an individual that's currently working for us, and something comes up, um, because here, I, I, I'm reading it as if for bus drivers. But I wanna make sure that we include an umbrella where it's, anybody that operates...
Forty-four nineteen? Which one?
Yeah, this policy's only for that.
Okay, so...
The other policy's covered.
Oh, that.
Hey, where, is it, is that in here? Okay, yeah, one of the...
If not, I can go back to the other.
How are we doing?
Almost done.
Conducting a safety sense of function, is that what we're talking about?
What's our next?
So, we just, we're saying that we're just going to... Provide information regarding, so why would we, why would we take that out?
I gotta go, I need to add this.
I'll be here.
No, I don't blame you, no, I've got a very important, I have a... I've been putting it off for six months, and I can't throw it out there.
Because it says, and, you don't wanna limit it to that.
It's saying, and evaluated, it goes, um, any staff member who tests positive has to be...
Can we have any...
From driving any district-owned and operated vehicles or conducting a safety sense of function. And then it says, and evaluated, that we would have them evaluated.
Do you know if we have any active reserves? You don't have to name them, but do you know?
Why wouldn't we take that out? I don't wanna protect all, all of them. I think it should be on there.
Yeah, I'd like to know that, especially around like veterans.
So, yes, and veterans.
I know that.
I think that was just, I think it was, when talking to you...
You should have a list of that.
Yeah, my next thought was...
Okay, so that's, that's what I wanna know, right? So, can we, can we change the wording to medical professional?
No teachers, I've seen past, it's crazy.
You can have pop in your classroom.
Okay. Okay, and provide information regarding...
Well, you can't, because they go through high school, so they got on a high school wall. So, you can do teachers that are, teachers that are current veterans. But they should have a wall here.
Evaluating by qualified substance abuse, okay, so...
Where are we at now? Where are we going?
All right.
Next packet.
Okay, let's go fifteen more minutes before we switch. We've got fifteen more minutes before we switch. And then, once we switch, go quickly, we can call a get-in.
Police may be returned for duty, and I'm going services, okay? That's what they consider positive.
Ma, what, Wednesday's high view.
An observed collection to prevent the addition of... So, like, how often are we doing the retesting? Are we given dates, or what?
That's only if they suspect that there was something...
A hundred percent, so then, how often would we um require them to be retested?
That's just the single retest to counter the suspected... A culture test.
Stickered employees shall, will be retested with an observed collection to prevent... So, we're just... All right.
Suspected, then we can retest it if we want to observe.
Why would you want that? What do you mean?
In order to counter the test that was suspected.
I know. Be made aware of it.
So, if we suspect, and let's say we know that, we still, they, they, they do, they do get suspended, correct?
I agree with you, but I mean, I respect it. I don't wanna, I don't wanna hear it.
It says prohibited from performing or continuing to perform safety um sense of functions, driving any board-owned vehicle.
So, know that whenever students are gonna get more than ten days, they're gonna be here.
Right. So, they still work for us, and they can still do what they do.
I think it's because this one is all related to vehicles.
So, state law says after ten, ten days, eleven days or more, there has to be here. State law says, once you're in a hit, thirty days or more, the board has to...
But I mean, again, because it's not specifically listed there, that would be up to our discretion to, you could handle it personally, if we get the test.
We need to allow... Okay.
So, in the past, they didn't have a process. It's probably wrong, so the problem was in the past, if you remember, 'cause I remember my first couple of weeks here, a kid came up for expulsion, and there was zero process. And the board made a determination whether or not to expel the kid, or give the kid additional days. According to the law, that's not the way it's supposed to be, because there was no due process given. With the due process, the superintendent has, doesn't need, which is right.
Because staff members regularly don't pay.
You can read the packet prior to, remember, you guys weren't getting the packet until the day of. So, you had no clue. So, now through the process, you're getting that packet while the advance, so that if we are saying to you, look, we don't wanna expel this kid, call it official relief, you know why? Or we're looking this kid to expulsion, it's our recommendation, but then you as a board are saying, you know what, we decided not to expel this kid.
I'm, I'm responsible for my actions.
Now, we have a problem.
Is this, um, is this an MCL?
The only thing we are able to change is the exit.
Oh, we're suspecting.
So, can I say this with all due respect?
You're wrong, you shouldn't penalize. That's how I'm reading it.
Yeah, with all, yeah, with all, yeah, and I'm saying it with all due respect, because the fact that when it ends up happening, when the, it's not just the superintendent making it, it's all through the team. We look at the whole child, everything that's been addressed. And what is gonna be the most beneficial to the school, is child and most beneficial to the school. So, we make, we tell the board what we're gonna do, it's because we're looking at the whole child. There could be, there could be a time where the board is looking at it, and I hope they got it in the... And that could be in a situation where...
Pre-employment, so we do expect...
You get what I'm saying?
I don't, I don't wanna.
Let, let me take the heat instead of the school.
I don't want it. Hold on, if a kid brings a weapon in school, I want that. I, I don't, I'm like, I'm not playing.
No, state law says if you bring a weapon in school, it's...
Yeah, you're done. I don't, I mean, I'm not even, I'm trying to be nice, huh?
So, with these policies, really, the only thing that we can change is anywhere where you see there's a propensity, where we can either add it or not, or link lines, other than that.
So, we wanna, we wanna emphasize pre-employment, don't we? I can't remember, I thought in the past we did.
Let me ask you, so, situation is that we expel a kid. Can you go into virtual programs?
No.
For people who...
No.
Can we make that recommend, not whether, so can we make that recommendation prior to expulsion? You can either go virtual or... No, 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 that's not my point.
Was it in the actual phase?
We haven't expelled the kid. God willing, it never happens. But the point is if... I just don't wanna ruin a kid's life.
Exactly, and that's my thing, is that we're also...
Take a note, and I'll look at it, and I'll give you the number. I'll find the policy number.
Because you gotta use that as a tool.
We, we know, we know the reality. All right, students have your long-term suspension, yep, you can have that, Youssef.
We're down to ten more minutes?
Where are you?
We did thirty.
Fifty-six thirty? Well, you're asking a question about every letter on there. Well, you've got a lot of time on your hands.
No, no, I think, uh, after I talk to the board, it'll probably all change.
I sifted through all this, I don't, I didn't, there was nothing that stuck out to me in these. Nothing we haven't talked about in the great few, that's my point, and now we're just following. Correct, well, even the checkbox is, is the stuff we discussed already.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't really have much, I just have one on voting, because I seen my daughter.
We can, there's just a lot of gravel and dirt. It's looking good though, they're moving along pretty nicely. I went, I went by there earlier in the waiting room just to see the kids. The accent tractor's really kicking butt. Yes.
So if we, if, can we, if, when these things are developed by the superintendent, can we share it with us?
We don't have any student applications on social media anyway. There's no su, there's, Youssef, doctor?
We already did the administrative guidelines are already.
Right, but what would, what would it develop?
Yeah.
Was it already developed?
Is that what that would refer to, like the football team, how the, uh, the fans?
Yeah, yeah.
They don't want. You don't want to make it unlimited, but you don't want to, you don't want to tell them you can't do it either, I mean, sometimes that's how they respond, so.
So that's, it's, it's all, it's all.
It's not something that we create individually.
Once they administrated the zeros or the thousands, it's one of those ones.
It was a foul, because zeros was.
I want to keep us a democracy.
All right, my first, uh, you guys go.
Where are you?
It was like flipping so fast, I just don't want to miss it.
Catch up on it.
Yeah, that was in the.
Okay, all right.
Right, but it's not, that's not how it's written here, it's in the superintendent.
Up in here.
Administered it all. That's what I'm talking about, right here.
To implement the policy.
Right.
So it's just we implement policies.
Five eleven.
It's HR process.
Five seven two two.
Sorry.
That's why it says including the development.
Thank you.
Just need to add the security and the other policies, just to make your system.
Five seven two oh?
Five seven seven two.
Five seven seven two? Are you even like, with us, you're just kind of doing your own thing?
No, 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 like you said, I.
Oh, that's from the weekend he did it, no, he's trying to show off.
Weekend, but you guys, everybody's flipping so fast, I just want to make sure you guys don't go past this, I'm sorry.
We did it over the weekend too, and I'm just trying to make sure we're the same.
No, no, I, everybody was flipping so fast because we're under time constraints.
Show off.
So I have to break you guys off.
So which one did you say last? He's at five.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
See that means like.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you imagine that they have to put this in there for married status? Can you imagine there was a point in time where they wouldn't educate a girl?
Again, we did, we already did the tobacco.
She wasn't allowed to be at all.
Copy it over.
Well, unless you're.
No, it was here, I remember, I wasn't the only girl who had to.
On or on.
I can understand.
I understand it, I don't agree with it.
No, no, but I, I remember seeing shows about it.
Yeah, because they don't want the other kids to see it, like the other kids don't know about it.
Doing something on.
So can't we just take the off law out and just put on?
But I wasn't for it.
That was really cause.
Broke off from it, started kicking it, something like that. It's a kid, it's a kid, I mean, I'm not a great.
She's on seventy one, so.
I'm on seventy two.
Something you, something you have to keep in mind when you look at student housing. How do we start the pipeline? The researchers show that we don't try to do the things that we just now implemented, that's why it's going to take time, it takes time. School districts that try to implement these more.
That is a tobacco problem.
This takes three, four, five years.
You're so funny.
There's a socioeconomic factor in that that is beyond what your control too, it's kind of scary.
I know, I know, I know.
Parents try.
Oh, no.
There's parents, I will tell you, there are, these are the parents you want to hear from, that they come over and say, I need your house. You don't hear from those people because we know, right? Because we sit with them, we work with them. We go to their houses.
It's not a question, it's.
We need to issue.
Superintendent show require the posting of signs.
Uh, policy.
Oh, I bet, okay.
About no smoking prohibited.
Weapons.
No, this is just.
No.
We already took all of the.
Then why, why would law enforcement?
Students, this is students.
What doesn't say students?
Yeah, but then why, then why is law enforcement?
So it should be weapons for students, that's the slogan. Part A, policy exception.
If it's for students only.
Let me ask you, I wonder if law enforcement personnel.
He said, if it's not an issue, don't draw action to it, this is the big one.
Does law enforcement personnel include our security?
Because this is where.
So then we need to add security to the weapons.
Without the permission of the superintendent.
Security officers. You don't want to have the superintendent be able to give us permission to carry. You have the thoughts of the other. The only thing we did here is because we had the policy before is we added more officers.
Yeah, I remember that.
That's where this is, but this is all, if you read up above, it's all about. Classroom instruction.
Yeah.
Programs on weapons, different things on that.
Okay, we're, I'm not reading that.
So the superintendent authorizes established instructional programs, I want them for your students to immediately work on with the weapons.
Where is that?
Right above it.
And remember, the general high school police, they're not our employees.
But it's a policy exception for law enforcement, under that, under that same context though.
Well, law enforcement is under the.
Well, yeah, they can't. Can't tell an officer not to bring his gun on school grounds. No, you can't actually, you can say what you want.
Yeah, exactly.
A rest. Didn't parent, okay.
So are we starting with this or are we waiting to?
No.
Starting.
Continue.
Oh, continue?
Yes. Okay. Eighty two twenty, J twenty.
I'll just check the front side on. Okay, are you ready?
Counsel, yep. Reading? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, everything's checked off, so I'm gonna assume it's okay. If you are doing a continue, that should not show this written on. Okay, that wouldn't change very, I would talk to. It's just for grading much.
This is great. I just have a question for you for, on the voting, is that something that's going to be your favorite or should? All right, my daughter did not hear anything about.
We don't listen to her, we do it, but so this one is going to be the one's down six, seven, eight, because even if they didn't agree. Probably here might be a state or someone comes in and shit, hits the turn eight seat, and they don't remember what I'm here, they can do that.
Okay.
It does happen more here, I just don't remember this.
Okay, of course then she may not remember either.
So this is, this was a problem.
All right, you, you would have to approve them. That's, yes.
Says fifty eight fifty, it has approved by superintendent.
Make the facility, they can make the facilities available, we don't need to do it, they do it, that's what it means. So instead of having come at us every time they want the facility for something, he has the authority to do it. But I will, I mean, I think, I don't worry about him, but I don't want the facility used for anything outside of anything relating to schools.
But that allows.
No, I know, Youssef?
We're emphasizing the superintendent.
Develop the plan.
Well, hold on, there's, there's reasons. Uh, social events. I'm thinking long term here, beyond Youssef, beyond myself and all of us. If the principal and the superintendent give the authority, have the authority to allow social events in, in the facilities. I mean, you're aware of what happened at Toulonville, another school district.
But that's, that's a law that they can't have it on property. So it would automatically be termination for anybody who did that, allow that.
It's against the law completely.
Forget the alcohol, I'm talking about concerts.
We didn't want to take any optional language.
Okay, so we'll take.
An outside concert using our facilities.
What about boy scouts? Well, if an outside concert uses our facilities, they would have to get approval from, they would have to go to the business office to get approval.
From you, eventually, but that's my point.
Yeah, it goes to the business office.
Beyond you, what do we do? That's my point.
Yeah.
So.
It would be that, I mean, it always goes down to the business office at every school district.
There was a concert at that school district. Dancing and it was, it was, somebody used the school facility to have a concert instead of a venue. Well, does it say that here?
But it's part of the.
Yeah, but. Yeah, but we hold them accountable, but that's, that's the point, it's too late then, that's my point.
So it says this option is provided to.
Problem is, here's what you.
So it's probably an outdated policy, but when they.
Lot of times when we request these things, there's not going to be a board meeting.
But.
You can do it by email.
By having this language in there, there was a.
So you got a special meeting. It's a form, yeah, form. You get a special meeting.
That's my point, that's what.
You're going to get a special meeting. No, no, I'm just, I'm playing.
How many, how many events, how many events outside of school district sponsored events have we acted on?
Well, because of COVID?
None. You, think of, think of a.
One for sure, could be at the crash.
Okay.
Class, so they're testing, so the high school.
The boy scouts, the new boy scouts just to come to school.
They have their own insurance?
Say somebody gets hurt?
Yeah, everybody red stuff, we can have insurance.
So if kids walk and trips on the staircase.
They have their own insurance.
That's why I just now. That's what pays off, I found out that people were using a general.
What?
Long story short, I sent an email saying, if this continues to happen, you are liable to a specific person. So it's not. Point of it is, is if they're doing that and the employee that allowed them to do it is the one that would be held accountable.
You know, I, I'm, I'm never going to support like our terms and conditions for, you know, open the public basketball lines or somebody renting them on on our behalf, like I, I. Like we should never use the facilities for anything like that, I'm sorry, I, I understand the pride of thing.
With the pools.
There's a lot of those places.
Pools are just swimming, I mean, like.
But we're really, we're not doing.
They have their own insurance, they did, they're on stage, they're.
And if we did gym rentals, they would have to have their insurance, but we have to come through our business office.
So when they say the minimum requirements, that's not.
That's why.
We really don't have.
I mean, just as like a.
What's that?
The problem is.
The, the answer is, you could always go back after the superintendent. Correct.
Or you'd be approving every single.
I don't want to prove every single thing, I'm just thinking.
But that's not often that that would happen.
That's my question to you is how many outside activities are we allowing?
So right now we have, uh, maybe you guys will believe, we have the, uh, year one country problem that is going to be renting our pool. Do you have for training?
College, one of the colleges, whether it's.
Haven't talked any of them, year one too, we have to remove all that too, every time they had a.
But they wanted to.
And now that we're out of holding. You know, reach, you're getting more people that want to.
I guess it falls back on the board to make sure they're hiring the right people, which essentially, I mean, you're trusting them with everything, so. Okay, thank you. I was just trying to, again, trying to think forward.
Now, the board, I can tell you that's. It doesn't have to be a policy for the board to direct the superintendent not to do certain things, that doesn't have to be.
Sure, no, I understand, yeah.
So this one too, we pick as many options as possible to make it most restrictive.
Right, so why then, why didn't we check this?
Because we don't have the principal to be deviating, again, to make it more restrictive. If you give, if you start giving the principal access, then that makes it less restrictive as to who can make changes to.
Have we switched groups yet or?
No.
Okay.
Look at the ages. It gives you, I think, uh, fourth.
Two groups now, right?
Pretty fourth or fourth grade.
You guys are still working.
They're done?
I don't want little kids.
I can switch with them?
You guys ready to switch?
Uh, we're almost done, I said we're. Yeah, I think we're.
Same policy, different, same, this one too, same policy, different.
So if it's MCL, we can't even change it, right?
Unless there's an action to choose or not choose, those are actions.
It's been around for like.
May fifth, then what, Wednesday?
High school.
Trying to go to these things, oh, Friday, May fifth is Friday.
Am I?
I'll be fifty two this year, babe.
We're both old by now.
Oh, yeah.
I'll speak for myself.
Go through shop. Me too. So today, I had coffee with no cookies. No, seriously, no lunch, I had a full tea. No carnitas. And I'm starting to shake. It is, well, let us. And I'll tell you, when I.
So for facility users, what if you just told us at every facility user at that time?
Oh, I'm red.
Call in. No, no, as soon as you can give us one of every one. Well, no, if, if.
Yeah, but I'm just. I mean, and every time, and pop, by the way, pop. So like I had pop all.
Cause I'm not sure.
No, nice, but still, pop is so bad. I know, but I just.
What number are we on now? Forty one. You guys are like just throwing me for a loop here, hold on, all right, I'm back on this one, right?
Yeah, this is all, it's all.
Oh, now you're ahead of us, right? Hold on, slow on. You just keep going, don't worry about it. Which one's the spoiler on? Conflict venture. I saw it, I've heard this already, I'm just. Did you look at this? Did you look at? I usually put my little sticky sticking out, so we're good. I'm good, thank you. Nope.
Stop me.
These are all laws.
These are all laws, so we're just making sure, okay.
So on page ten, that's the only place where there was an option, instead of the superintendent's decision shall be final, it's, it comes to the board just by. They can appeal to the board.
Why, why did we, yeah, why did we take these out? Documentation, aren't you bringing?
Oh, because we did it with the other ones too, because they were repetitive, because if we're saying we have to re-document, then that means our documentation and aid throughout is not satisfactory, but that's not the case. So this is the one that was in the other set of policies too, where it was redundant.
Is this a, a private board member, do I get board?
For me, I think.
Yeah, I always think on you. A bully, prevention test.
I guess I'm thinking, should this be more specific? Um, because that would.
To supervise. Why is, why does it say shall?
Because of this, you say.
Or shall be offered. Oh, I see what you're saying, so one is an offer, one is a loss.
He always said with board policy, you will always want to take shall or may instead of will, because otherwise you're yourself, yeah. Try yourself on.
Doctor, so, just a question, for the staff hired for being like the team sport, is a band, is it marching band, is it sport?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
This is a letter.
And that's what I thought, I just, I just wanna verify.
So this one too, we took every.
Well, drama is that too, because they give a letter.
Yeah. You didn't get a letter, is it inter, inter-school elastic? And then we're adding robotics.
I mean, is it, should they, because, or else, those kids would never get a letter.
What's up, Pass? How you doing?
I think it's so hard because Hudson's gonna be close to each other, brother and sister. I mean, it's just, you're not causing us to never talk to each other, so.
I'll be right back.
Alright, yeah, okay. We do believe that that's a fine, that's a policy, or at the same time, I'm just cutting it, it's gonna fall as. Yeah.
So I did it.
I got it. Something to do with. But that's what the.
Okay, are we starting with the next one, so we can get going?
She can't activate all the change. So what ends up happening is, yes, Linda.
You have me just trade them?
If they're ready. I don't know if they're ready.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, top one of that.
So.
Billy, are you gonna be a while?
It's one, we wanted to describe as well. So let's say you're working.
If they're done, then that's it.
Uh, we just started.
Oh, this is a new one.
Who was here, right?
Oh, wait, did you do, uh, did you do these yet?
Somebody else had.
Did you do purple first?
So if there's an assistant personnel, they would do the evaluation.
So who wrote in your, so these aren't signed at the top, is this the scribe one?
Yeah, the one, the check is the one.
No, because they just have.
Yeah, they're two different sets of.
Yeah, this is our first.
I think you were right.
But it doesn't say that.
Yeah, I think you're the.
No, we were right.
Because when you look at the law, what is the definition of the law, not the error definition?
We did one.
Right, this is it.
You look, you look at, if you're filing taxes, what are you doing?
Oh, okay, so you just, are you ready? Look at you, superpowers.
I don't remember what the public is, but you stared at it for an afternoon.
Thank you.
Not if they're second or third positive, no, according to the law, second or third positive. Everybody guys, it gets off in the year of.
Alright, alright.
You know, it's, it's just the reality of it.
I just know I can marry my fourth cousin.
You said can or can't?
Can, yeah.
Because a lot of times if you do, you won't know until later.
No, it was, we were like, it was a joke growing up.
Yeah, fourth cousin, you can marry him. Yeah, it comes down to what the laws. Because I had to speak some, come on.
You see anything, Billy?
Emergency.
I'm on page five thirteen.
Address for the library.
Did you guys?
Yes.
Which one? Forty one twenty.
Forty one twenty already. It's not like broken out.
Pardon?
One is stapled and then one is.
There was, it's not, oh, oh nine, forty one twenty eight point.
Okay.
Yes. If you're on the page.
This is the.
Uh, the I check forms, and one of the other things we got rid of, made much American, just I check forms. I don't know, that's what you said.
Trying.
Are these, no, these are not the same. Right? No, this is.
Yeah, and I check, I just remember in the very first packet we did, we got rid of the word I check, to be more generic, to whatever form is accepted.
The fours and fives are the same?
No, no. These are the fours right here.
No, I know, but we need, but I, I, cause I just, because I asked about it, because I was, I just fill out an I check form, so.
These are all state laws here.
Here, you want my, take this one, whatever it's, these are the ones that can be buried.
Well, um, you see, that's what it said, that's, we got rid of I check.
These are five right here, this is five.
To make it more consistent.
Yeah, I checked.
I'm like, no.
We got rid of the word I check, to be more, to be more.
So I will find them here, it's, they're gonna be.
Andrea's back here.
Oh, that's what it was.
Yeah. Yeah, Linda's.
Other, other, other policies got rid of I check.
Why would we not do that?
This stack is missing the four thousand, should somebody keep that?
Sorry, that's what I'm saying, it's in here, so we got rid of it before. There was another policy, because I remember, because that came up when I said, well, why don't we have the page for I check, something like that, yeah, but yeah. Need to be consistent with the other policies.
The small four thousand stack is missing.
Yeah, I checked the word. I, I definitely could be wrong.
Dr. Mattel?
Yes.
The small four thousands is missing from this.
Is it this one?
No.
No, you're good.
The whole packet maybe they.
The response says four thousand.
There's fours and fives in each packet, in each.
The recorders packet or the?
No, just the she, uh, Christie Mary has the recorders packet, so it's okay, that, I mean, we're good.
A lot of these are state laws, Billy, so I'm just.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just.
The purple packet was mostly like MCL and.
Maybe.
No, wasn't it?
Yeah, but, and that takes care of that, because it says children.
Which one are you on, Nadia?
I'm on, now I'm on one one.
Threatening behavior?
Uh, no, compensation.
Forty four, ten, point.
That's a moment here.
Yeah, oh.
Okay, so the board has elected to provide minimum.
What was it, nobody?
So. Why didn't we cross this off? Why wouldn't we give them a, why wouldn't we want them to carry?
I wish I was, just say. I was just looking to see.
Yeah.
I've eaten.
Which one you don't?
Uh, no, this is.
So are we, so.
Oh, you know what, this is, probably, yeah, that's probably.
Okay, so are we saying that they can carry two policies?
Are we still?
Why, doesn't that more conflict off?
No, you guys didn't.
My district doesn't allow it?
Yeah, they do.
Where are you at, which one, which one are you on, Sal?
When I first switched.
I saw one, one, I moved on. What's the question here? Yeah, what's, what do you, what do you question here?
They weren't on me.
I, I realize this is common sense.
I don't know, my husband, because he had, um, a house insurance.
What's, what's the question?
I'm telling you, I'm telling you what happened with a, a girl that I know, a teacher.
They're allowed to have a second.
No, she.
Yeah, it's just a pay for it.
It's not, he was paying.
But I'm telling you what happened to us, we had a teacher, she moved up to Traverse City, she was bawling, because they wanted thirty two thousand dollars. Because she.
So it's at his discretion, it's still in that person's.
But that person can't even pass an I check.
So that's when I went.
Doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, they still can't be approved to be a rep.
But I was a great hand.
Um, no.
According to this.
Yeah.
Oh, one on one. Well, let me ask you. Not just him, let's talk about the I check. Somebody killed somebody at the age of twenty and they got out of jail at forty five. But that, I mean, I don't wanna murder or, or, or pedophile around the kids, like.
All right, let me give you an answer. I said my real world, I had a friend who were camping at the state camp ground, and he was in the restroom on a tree. Uh, state park ranger came up behind him, he was surrounded, he was on the offender, and he could be on the offenders list. Now, I mean, she's gonna be somebody really not aware of him, because he's on the. Cause there's nobody around him and he was. I mean, is that worth not getting a job?
Technically?
I know, technically, yeah.
Well.
Times that by.
So like if you have two, a husband and a wife that work for a sister.
And my kids are smart.
I mean, that's so bad for the guy.
No, 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 no.
I thought you were, somewhere else.
Oh, they don't? Well, I did cash in a little because I don't, right, but I wasn't allowed to carry it. So how do we?
What do you, what do you, like, give me an example?
If somebody has a criminal pack.
Sure is, seventeen thousand dollars.
It doesn't matter, this is public, yeah.
Cause I'm not carrying my family benefits, I'm not carrying the actual health insurance, absolutely, I am. Save it, cause they, you know, they break down, but they're pure, I get my.
But remember who, remember who's on the, remember who's on the line now.
About my health, I don't.
He's on one.
Yeah, because, so we, this is something that I really. You can, yes, but here, I want to, um.
At the end of the day, God forbid.
I mean, it's gonna save us a lot of money.
We approved somebody to come in, we had a record, but they make clean sense, right? That person does something in the school. Leaving.
Can we get a breakdown?
The district is not culpable, because they went through the process, and the offense doesn't, was not an offense on children, therefore legally, we're okay. If the offense was an offense on children and we allowed them to come in, legally, we're not okay. So you have to look at it from a legal standpoint.
So do I, can we read this?
But most of the things that we see, and I get, I know what you're talking about, could be an extreme situation, most of the things we see is like.
Let me ask you a question, eighteen year old gets caught with marijuana. It was a felony. You think he shouldn't be hired at the age of thirty five?
At the age of thirty five?
And if you can see. So what is this?
You wanna make that decision or you want?
But I'd still like to know.
I hired John Doe for FYI, that's, he has a record. He was a publicist, not, yeah, he's pulled this by the.
I got seven, I got seven personalities, I'm gonna put a piece of glass in front of my face and give you some rocks. I got a piece of glass in front of my face and I'm gonna give you some rocks and throw it, six years ago. I mean, either I trust him or I don't, either I trust the superintendent or I don't, that's the way I look at it. Yeah, but still, federally, federally it's not.
Federally it's not, but, but state.
If I cross into Ohio with it, I'm being charged federally, it doesn't matter.
Actually, I didn't have that question coming out.
So, that's, that's, that's something that's coming, that's something that is being debated in courts right now.
Yeah, but there's a, there's a bill, there's a bill in Congress in Washington that is presenting illegal items, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it's gonna end up being legal, because federal's not, you're billing.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not a fan of it, but I still.
But I know where Sal was coming from, from the aspect.
I get it, I get it, I'm with her.
We know what he's gonna do, but what if you said Penny and Linda are here? I get that. No, I, I get that, I, I will get this.
All right.
I know.
You didn't move anywhere, I think you were in court. Yeah, I mean, I'm already gone through this, I mean, that's, see what you gotta do. I wasn't in the bathroom. Geez, anything else you wanna share with the public?
No, it's yours, no. Let me tell you, I, I'm gonna.
I can tell, geez.
Oh, you're afraid.
Go wash his pants. But I'm saying that.
Wouldn't be the first time, Nadia, I hear all kinds of stuff, things, stuff on myself. None of it's a phase. Got rusty workplace. Huh? The district recommends genetic information. Antenna finding.
Slipping. You're slipping, man.
Well, I mean, my question is, what should it matter, because you can't hire, you can't not hire someone's.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't, I just leave it.
So the only time, this stuff comes to the board though, if.
All right, well, actually, I do have a question.
Right?
Explosions.
On one twenty. No, that's the next packet.
So expulsion, the revolting, the way it always comes to the board. I do have a question, ten fifty one. Where are we at now, fifty one, you said?
All right, so we list off everything for eligibility, um, we don't mention anything about the eligibility, um, should it? Is it all about forty?
Ten, yeah, that's already.
Fifty one eleven, you said?
Would it be the proxy? Cause I, 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 I don't, there's never seen, it was only referenced one more time.
How we doing?
How we doing?
All right. Ready or not.
Yep.
All right.
It's just represented in fifty one, you, not fifteen. Policies. All right. Is that gonna be in the policy eventually, or?
We're saying that explosions will have.
I don't understand. That's all, question, I'm sure, see, give me this later, I thought about that.
No, no, no.
Well, yeah, yeah, but. All right.
Yeah, everybody should, but we just need to have like three, four people that are experts, and then make a trade. Cause it's gonna be.
It's great, it's great thing. Okay, so it won't be the board policy, okay.
How we doing?
All right, cool, okay. All right, then this one says.
Two groups or what? And the green, I'm gonna just check that.
I think one, this is the second, we're the second.
You should be the second, okay. How about on these, how many groups check this? Two, okay. I'm just looking at, how many groups is checking?
This is the third.
They're the third.
Can we, uh, had anybody tried to sign?
So let me know when the reds are done.
And then we would take green, cause we did red.
Okay.
Have we, have anybody tried to sign a virtual program?
We, we sent out the, uh.
I mean, we're applying, we just wanna make.
You haven't had anybody inquire on say?
We have, Rod wants to check it out.
Like to see the numbers.
Yeah, we just did, I think, uh, we, last year.
Well, what about the other one?
Yeah, we bumped it out, so it'll be, uh, and, uh, but we will be.
Do we, do we have to report this to the county? Do we have that in here?
No, I get it, I'm just saying, like, some of the districts that don't have.
So does it?
Anyway. Where do you want some? I'm on, I'm on thirteen.
Okay.
Uh, fifty one thirty.
Are we good, that's what we're saying?
Yes, yes, where are you at Dave?
Well, my next, my next question is the forty-one thirty.
Fifty-one what you said?
Fifty-one thirty is my next question.
What's your question?
My question is, it says that people, here we go, it's on F. Students may write to return on twentieth birthday, uh, doesn't specify that they can, I'm assuming they can't return to high school at the twentieth.
You can't go to public schools.
Prior to twenty. So it doesn't, I'm assuming that's where it. You can actually be in the high school at the twentieth, holy moly, is that problematic?
Well, that's a state.
No, no, okay, that, that's fine.
It's a state law, it's not a.
Wow. Someone under twenty can go into.
No, no, return prior to their twentieth birthday, they can't be in high school on their twentieth birthday. Yeah, unless it's special ed, yeah.
Still.
But there's a lot of nineteen year old high school kids.
Uh, it's true, obviously more.
If I was born in May of a year.
No, I can't, I held my son back and he could have been.
That's what it is, it's not, it's not somebody coming to register when they're sixteen years old.
Nope, yeah. It's okay, ninety-nine cents, they always sell people ninety-nine cents, when it sounded better, say nineteen or under, would have sounded better, green. Where twenty, it pushed you over.
Where are we going up to here?
Right, okay.
Where are you at?
I'm, I'm thirty-six, she's on thirty-six, you're on thirty-six.
Mine is fifty-two hundred. The approved. Uh, the list, the list of approved, now. Yeah, excuse, it doesn't give the parents any day to say, hey, I mean, like, I take my kids out for vacation and stuff like that. And actually, I kinda got screwed on that, almost got screwed on that, like, a couple of years ago, I took my daughter out for a week to go on vacation and they did it all on our excuse.
How can you, how can you put vacation as excuse?
Well.
How would you do that?
I didn't, I didn't.
No, no, but how do, okay, you can do that as a parent, but why would the school district allow that to be excused? Can you imagine throughout the year, I'm gonna take my kid for a month somewhere?
Yeah, but if you have a policy though, that, well, actually, people do that, they excuse.
They can, but it doesn't mean it's excused.
But not anymore.
Why would it be?
Our tenant's policy now is, if you take your child out of school, like, for example, you contact the school and say, well, we're going out of town. Well, we're gonna tell you, okay, those are gonna be ours, it's your child's responsibility to make up.
Not now, a while ago.
I don't beg, you do have a whole policy now where the, I mean, so it's true.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's our, it's our.
Only if there's anything here that you can put like this, or, or parent approved.
It's late, it's different.
Yeah, I mean, can you imagine, I wanna take my kid on a cruise, I wanna do it Christmas, it's too expensive, so I'm just gonna take the first week of December off and just take my kids, this is cheaper.
Yeah, that's what some people will do, it's something I have done.
And that's fine, it's fine.
For my kids, are decent.
You can do that, they're not excused, they're not excused.
Only thing that's an excuse is, is, because my state. A school can tell you it's not, absolutely not. And they can say, we're gonna call.
No, and actually, as we did, the, the last time we did it, it was all excused.
They said it was all excused.
It was all unexcused, we set the leg, I mean, we wrote to the principal.
But it was. Well, we're not supposed to, but.
But it was a policy change and I'm sure it was in some fine writing somewhere that we didn't know about.
How far are we going here, just fifty-one thirty?
As long as your daughter makes it to work and stuff. Because the oldest is.
We're not getting in fifty-two hundred.
And you have to work around the teacher's schedule.
What do you know, that's what I'm asking you, when are you getting to the fifty? Yeah, we should be done.
One last switch and then we should be done.
I'd like to know because when I guess five years.
Yeah, I've got no more questions until this back. I didn't, you know, I, I, I know, I took her out last year and it was like all unexcused. No, and, and I understand that, and if, if, I would never do it if my kids wouldn't make up the work, but you are some care, some care, I'm just taking my. Or like, you know, give them the day off of prom or something, that's unexcused.
I can't figure you out, finally you're three behind me, jump forehead, how's that work? I'm guessing, I don't know. I gotta, where is he at, I gotta question, oh, this is a serious one, get this guy over here. I'm gonna be honest with you here, okay? I, I, I one hundred percent understand use of medications. There has to be. Especially around asthmatic kids. Right? If a kid has asthma, I get it, get the letter, whatever. But if a kid has an inhaler, you can't use it. Pass it around?
I know.
I know these morphine EpiPen, that's a life-saving device that a kid can't have on.
My son Jamal.
No, they can't, they, no, absolutely, if you get them doctors, no, you have to have it on, you can't stop them.
Like my son Jamal, EpiPen, yeah, we had one in the office and he also wanted to pack.
Okay.
But we also wanted the office because the genius would forget.
Yeah, according to this, we take.
One time, true story, now, the principal, I had one of my sons EpiPen in the truck and a teacher was having an allergic reaction, he didn't know.
So they keep the message at the school, like he's gonna do something with them.
Okay. Alright, we're waiting, uh, so did you guys, who did, who did all three, one group did all three already, I believe.
Really?
Who were the overachievers?
It was, it was Danielle.
We got Salwa, bro. We gotta deal with Salwa. She's reading every little letter and every. And I'm glad you're reading them.
Come on now. It's good.
Need some encouragement, thanks.
Positive reinforcement.
But we were all bad cuz we didn't have this ahead of us. I didn't get it ahead of time, like this, I looked over this, I'm proud, over the weekend, it was fine.
I took the recommendation.
Yeah, I mean. That's when I read every letter, I read every letter then, I'm like, what the heck's going on here?
Alright. Top one is the recorder, after this, we're done. Thank you. So it's, say fifteen minutes, we should be able to finish. I'll check in at fifteen, check what I've been doing, okay.
We need forty.
You only have until five.
Alright, so actually, I. Yeah, oh, you got, you do the five, five seconds first?
I'm not using that bag, I'm just using the one I have.
These are all MCL, right?
Participation awards now? Worst thing to happen in society.
Oh, my God, yeah. These are all homeless students.
I think my oldest son would dig them. If we didn't win, I don't wanna do them. Yep.
So the district recommends. Right, so we, do we have like a fund for that, is that how that?
My first question is, we need to, uh.
Majorities are law.
My first question.
Where are you?
No, no, I mean, just so.
On fifty-five ten?
Yeah, I'm right there, okay.
What, what'd you say? I don't, I, I. Yeah? That's like a high school senior only, seventeen or older. So if this is colored, if he's seventeen and gets accused of, that's where he can't be a student. No, it's my point, yeah. You can't because of state law. Well, it's not the twenty year old.
So tough when you have like seventeen, eighteen year olds.
But, so, they made it, so.
No use of tobacco, why shouldn't it? It's such a problem these days, she's, those vapes.
When it comes to title section, those are also, you can't change, correct? When it comes to titles.
We're giving the parents the choice.
It's on fifty-five forty.
So we're just talking about, um.
Yeah, I think that's cyber stalking stuff. Somebody can give an example up here soon, I have a challenge that's gonna be in the school. These kids are really rough with each other, man, they're making videos and it's not good. Disrupting society, really, disrupting the morals of society, the way people should treat each other. You guys hear about that kid that did that Snapchat, not Snap, was that one challenge? Who does the challenges, one of those social media platforms? Burned over ninety percent of his body, misfigured, did one of those challenges that. Yeah, burned ninety percent of his body before he was like sixteen years old.
I'm surprised that my parents weren't involved in that process.
Alright, I'm bowling. The three day rule was removed. All stuff we've already gone through, really. Which one are you, fifty-five twenty you said? No.
He's fifty-five forty.
Alright. Alright, I say in no way should be a law enforcement interviewing a student without their being there.
Um.
Hold on.
Depends on their age. But we had a joke about that one.
Depends on the interview. It's, it's an incriminating interview, a potentially incriminating interview.
The student is going to, is, is going to basically commit his parents, then yes, but if the law enforcement come to the school because they think the kid did something, he could get himself in so much trouble, cuz he hasn't shot up.
Fifty-five forty interrogation of students, when law enforcement or other authorities arrive in the school, which interview a student or investigate, what is it? Fifty-five forty, top, top.
Honestly, I think that open us in litigation. Yeah, that's fine.
You actually don't, I'm just telling you, you need to ask the attorney then.
No, but you see, but, but you could inform the student, just don't say anything until your parent or lawyer.
Where did I see this, where, where a principal wouldn't allow law enforcement to interview a kid, he got in trouble. I'm telling you.
I know, but I just haven't seen anything.
Hold on, the law is the law, regardless if it's here in Timbuktu, uh, North Dakota.
Yeah, it would be nice for us to know like what they're doing.
I disagree with you, they shouldn't, I'm just saying, I don't know if you can stop them, that's my point.
See, I saw a video where the nurse wouldn't allow them to drop blood, and she actually, he didn't want them to go to jail, but she was right. The guy, and, and eventually she let go, it's a much fee, but, but yeah, some cops will threaten you and tell you.
I'm pretty sure you can't stop it, so that's a good, that's a good attorney.
Yeah, that's, okay, I, I saw that and I just.
So you wanna write that in, we need to ask the attorney, ask whether or not we can have law enforcement wait for a parent to be there or an attorney.
Well, and that's, and that's. Yeah, and that did question my ticket, but what if it's about the parent? But.
If it's a child detention services issue, that's a whole different story, but you can't say another belt because the other belts will tell them, if you do this, then. Yeah, but even if the parents are there, you can still search them.
Search them, but not, yeah.
They don't, you don't need the parents, if law enforcement's there, you don't need the parents' permission.
Right, that's the same.
Yeah, that is.
Ask him, no, speak to the attorney about this. Cuz it sounds like they can only speak to the attorney, now, we, we don't have that right to say that.
And that's, yeah.
Well, it says the police can interrogate a child or interview a child. So we wanna know from Gary if this is something we can say no, we need a parent there. Right? Unless it's, unless it's about child abuse, that's the problem.
So. If it's about child abuse.
Is there three of you?
I said we did it. The policy doesn't say.
It's law, but we can look at adding it.
Yeah, the policy, it just says.
Okay.
Well, we can, we can, Justin, you wrote it in there, right?
It's two, yeah. Or, what's the last?
We don't have to look at that a lot.
Or on fifty-six, what, forty-one?
Oh, no, we finished.
Oh, where are you, I know.
All right, I actually got a question on the first page, so in the last one and in this one, the other one talking about, um, discrimination against women, and this one is against disability, what about the public, and other kind of discrimination, um, like discrimination?
This is for second and five oh four and eight, so it doesn't.
Okay, so it's just nothing about, um, discrimination for sexual, religion, or age, okay, okay. That's what I thought, I just wanted, because none of that else was also mentioned here at all, about how cruel we can discriminate by age.
What's creating?
Okay, all right.
David, we're considered senior citizens now, you and I, so.
Oh, I, I definitely am, that was. Oh, we give you that for years.
Been getting that for years.
I actually got a senior citizen discount of fifty, so.
I was getting that forty-five.
I was so sad when I came.
Because I'm gonna join them, I'm not that I'm against it, I just.
I'm not against it, I mean, that's. It works, it's kind of depressing to get it.
Has access to things with a degree, why wouldn't we get rid of that?
Our card.
Oh, I will sue you. I will sue.
You have three years.
Three? I thought this ended like a three, four.
They do, I didn't get them.
I was getting them at forty-five.
Really?
Yeah, why would you give it to a child?
You want, uh, which one?
Holy mackerel.
I mean, I don't care, I've seen all this, it doesn't matter, yeah.
How we doing, we good?
Do you know, do you know what's?
We got seven minutes.
We'll be good.
What is it?
On track, yeah.
Derek is saying, is that he uses the word I check?
I had one at forty-nine, but I.
Back, a background check. Because if I check all the way, something else comes up.
Forty-one. That's just, um. If we put in a forty on.
Any other statement.
Leave of absence, we have two.
It depends on our score.
So it's a case per case basis?
Yeah.
Mr. FYI, on the forty-sixty-two, yes, other two, two, do you read background check, right? In case they add a medical.
Forty-one, sixty-three, you said? Forty-one, sixty-two, and what letter?
Yes, thank you.
No, really, really.
Hold on, hold on, let's, let's, A, turn off all?
Look for real volunteers, if they're not alone, then you just go on and go to the public defenders.
All right.
State of Michigan.
So you want that back in?
Put in their name and address, and you put that in, which is what's returned, really.
Down here, they crossed out, um.
Hold on, they want, this has been removed, so why would they add it, I don't understand. Is valued by a medical abuse professional, medical professional? I, I, I know, I. Once they're released, they're released.
All right, so, I think I have a question for you also, so for marijuana, we're going by the state, you go by federal, can the, basically.
Procedures.
If you get marijuana in your system, is it by state or by federal? So then, that shouldn't be on here.
Well, hold on, yeah, I mean.
It's, it's legal in the state.
Doesn't, it doesn't matter, well, hold on, let me, let me, let me remind you something, we can say the state all day, but the school funds come from federal.
No, but this is the drug testing.
Regardless.
Oh, random drug testing, send it. Okay. Okay.
I'm good with this, because there's federal funds that go into this, it's an interest, right? To me, they're federal funds that come for school, I can say state all day and night, but the federal law still doesn't allow this.
Yeah, but that's why, that's why.
Yeah, it's not the state, you can't say the state for that, because.
Oh, but this is for the, this is for under the random drug.
Me, I say.
Random drug testing somebody who came up with marijuana.
We only drug tested someone who's under the.
Okay, I know, okay, then let's go to the super technical, it's part of a policy, if he like starts a random. All right.
Hold on, marijuana.
Oh. All right, I don't mind leaving it in, because if it ever comes up.
Because if you take it out, you tie up the district, and they can't do anything.
So then, I, I don't see under here medical, like, what if it's medical?
She's saying she wants to see scout, scout.
Doesn't, it doesn't matter, because that's medical, as long as you're not. Remember, there's, it's recreational, that's, that's where you, uh.
I don't, I mean, but that's why I brought it up, because I don't know if it's, if we do get a file in state or.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, I just have one hundred more questions.
Really, I need, I should.
But what do you want? Okay.
Sure.
I made it.
Anything, okay. I've never held a shooting, ever, can they be, that's how we were raised.
No, I'll tell you why, no.
Well, that's how we were raised.
What number? What number did you say? Forty-two, eleven? Yeah, what, okay, the superintendent development ministry guideline necessarily, please respond, including the development of forms upon which such reports may be made. Can't let me share the reports?
No, no, we, we're doing them, the hires is one.
Whistleblowers have protections under the law, they can't be exposed.
But they're still not all on, are they?
No, I still read them individually, but.
The board has, if the board wants to, we don't, perhaps the board has.
Got it, can they be shared, are they, that's, but it doesn't say the guidelines, it says can they, it needs to say can the guidelines be shared, because they can be the whistleblowers too, right? No, we're not doing anything, whoever put that in needs to clarify that, Yusef, Dr. Masal, if you read your board packet, you, you know. Somebody needs to clarify this, they wrote in, can they be shared, I don't know if they're talking about the guidelines for whistleblower or the person, because they can't, you can't share the person by law.
No, this was, the question here was to the group, can we share what our administration guidelines.
And then, you need to write, can the guidelines be shared, not they, because they could be referring to a person also.
But, but our response was, the guidelines are already in policies.
So that needs to be struck.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's the guidelines are already in policies, so this is just reiterating the policy.
I don't want this to go to vote under they meaning they, they could be people. I don't know what they wrote, can they be shared, they meaning the guidelines or they meaning persons?
Guidelines.
Okay, so we have to write guidelines, that's what I'm saying.
But.
You're just disregarding it.
But, no, we're, we're gonna put it in the notes, that this is actually in policies, it was really tough to.
Oh, yeah.
As long as it's not put on the people, that's fine, yeah, I just don't want to violate federal law on that either.
Walk in, she's sitting.
All right, my next question is on forty-two, you said, use the tobacco by students.
Yep. What's your question, Dave?
I think someone should be able to have a cigarette.
Can be on a cigarette where? Smoke a cigarette in their car?
No, tobacco, order this, they can't even have tobacco in their car.
So look at it this way, is anybody gonna go in the contract?
No.
It's invasion of privacy, can't do a search warrant for tobacco. So the reason why that statement is made.
Say, don't have a sheet, show them, all right.
That's why the state is.
Okay, okay, as long as.
No, it's a good question.
So, I'm not a smoker, but if I, if I was, I couldn't go have a cigarette in my car.
So that's why we keep telling the students, it's a service line, you guys are small.
And where's that?
Across the street.
Why is it?
That house is across the street, you're not gonna worry like you would.
It's against the law, yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I don't know, I've never seen it, so I was quite curious, I was curious, I don't know.
We went from teacher smoking in the lounge, to students smoking.
Students smoking in.
From Burnout Alley?
From Burnout Alley?
Student, she just smoked.
There was an alley, there was an alley.
Was it even an alley, it was a connection between two halls.
So all the kids that was small, in between classes, you were supposed to call it Burnout.
Oh, yeah, Argus is waiter, either in the bathroom or behind the auto shop.
The man, they would.
Did he meet? It's just, um, Terri, this is what, in just.
Did I? I got handled.
For graduation, so she had a graduate, and then you met earlier, so you're welcome, okay, and then congratulations, I was on the date, okay?
Perfect, yep.
You have a paddle in the limousine.
Thank you.
You want the paddle? I mean, look how, look at, look at. Oh, I know, yeah, I had it.
Unless they did.
Charlie, he used paddles on March twenty-second.
And look how good these kids turned out.
Yeah, I don't want nobody to hit my kid with a paddle.
It got to the point where you're like, paddle, they go out.
Nope, that was it, okay.
I remember.
I can make some off game tonight.
I nullify.
Karen, it's Karen Porter.
You know how to say this one?
Oh. Close the session.
ADB, what is it, ADB? Are they here yet?
Yeah. Jen, right?
Yeah. Okay, perfect.
Wait, do you wanna ask them if they have questions?
No. Hi, Dan, how are you? ADB?
Yes. Yep, that it?
Valgen, Valgenovski? I just, I'm going by syllables, Valgenovski is what it looks like.
Yeah, it's the same one for next week, yeah. Is it the same, Yusef, we need these for the fifteen, too?
No.
How did you do?
Yusef, you want this bag?
Thank you.
Okay, Madam President?
Valgenovski? Okay, wait, um, see, I wanna get it right, um, Jan, Ovsky? Valjanovski, perfect, thank you.
Okay, Madam President, that concludes the policy review.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, so can I get a motion to adjourn study session?
So moved.
Six forty-eight.
Okay, moved by trustee Seba, seconded by secretary Amen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed on adjournment? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.